So I'm going to call this, what month is it? May 8th, 2023, regular meeting of the Beacon City School District Board of Education to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where it stands, indivisible, with every justice.
Vicki, roll call, please.
Here.
Delayed.
Here.
Here.
Delayed. Here. Here, thank you. Matt, can you review the far exits, please?
Yep, the exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Open to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our workshop. Tonight is our official budget hearing, so can I have a motion to open our budget hearing? So moved.
Second.
Laura, second by Kristen. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes five to zero.
Emery and I are going to kind of go back and forth between the slides, so nothing has really fundamentally changed with our budget from the last board meeting, although some things at the state level have changed. So we're just going to start with a quick update on the state side, and then we'll go through some of the highlights of our budget.
So the last time we spoke to you, the New York State budget was not finalized, so it is. The fully funding of foundation aid is not a change. Both Senate, Assembly, and Governor all agreed to the same amount, so that was the number that we had all along. The additional pre-K funding, again, there is money available. It hasn't been decided how it's going to get allocated yet. With the budget being so late, there's still some details that are still coming through. That's especially around school meals. I did reach out to Karen Pagano today, and I got a huge explanation, and it's still very unclear. What I do know is that there is a chance that Beacon could be eligible for school meals, so stay tuned to that. But it also has to do with state funding and then federal funding as well. So once we know more, we would be more than happy to share it with the board and with the community. And the waiver for retirees are extended. Why that's important? Because if there are retired teachers in a certain certification area that are retired that want to come back, there's usually a limit of $35,000 that you can make if you are retirement collecting a pension. The waiver's been extended for another year, so you can come back to work full-time and also collect your pension. So for the school districts, that's helpful if we can convince a retiree to come out of retirement and help us out for the year.
Okay, so back when we started talking about the budget about five months ago, in, you know, many board meetings between then and now, we talked about several things that we were really focused on in building this budget. So one was the expansion of pre-K again. Another was more mental health services in the district, which has been something we've tried to expand really for the last several years. Another is more academic interventions for students who need them. And then we had some transportation innovations or changes that we've been working on, too. So just starting with pre-K, we do get some funding for the state. It's not fully funded from the state. It's around 50% or so of funding that we receive from the state through the UPK funds, but we added an additional teaching position to our pre-K staff, so we now have six full-day classes. And just to review the history, three years ago, all the pre-K was half-day. Two years ago, we piloted one. Last year, yeah, right. So two years ago, we piloted one full-day. Last year, they were all full-day. We were able to expand the full-day. And so we were able to serve almost all the students who registered. And so we did the lottery for that. And the lottery, I need to add, is one of the ways that's required by the state, so that's not just Beacon didn't invent that. That's the way the state asks us to do the slots. And so we have those slots in our own pre-K program, and then we have 10 slots in community-based programs as well. You know, the goal with the community-based slots is to serve all the students who need them in the district, so that's something that we're working towards with this budget. But it's something that we really have seen a lot of success with, and it's been great to see it grow. There's a lot to the growth of it, us being able to fund through our budget, our portion of it, and also us having the space to do it, too. So those are things that every year we'll be working through, but we were able to do six full-day classes this year. At Beacon High School was a little bit less of a sort of a budget focus this year. Certainly, you know, a lot of amazing things have been happening this year, and there's always, we're always talking about ways to improve the high school, but in terms of, you know, positions, Beacon High School's not receiving as many as some of the other levels in the district this year. We do have a world language teacher position that we're working on filling. We are adding the AP African Studies class this year and bringing back the AP Environmental Science class. And then Mr. Dwyer and his team has developed a ninth-grade transition support program that will start in the summer and then continue throughout the year, and so they're really excited to move that forward as well. And should also say, and this is something that we've been seeing at all levels, we've really worked on expanding clubs and after-school opportunities for high school students, and that goes for middle school and elementary school as well. But that's something that we're expanding at the high school.
Sorry to interrupt you, but is that, is that support, that transition support, is it targeted to kids that they feel are going to have a harder time transitioning into ninth grade, or is it sort of?
Some aspects of it are open-ended, and for any ninth grader, some are targeted. So they're working with the Roundabout eighth-grade teachers and guidance team to target some students that they feel need more support, you know, whether it's like counseling, academic support, or kind of all of that. So it's going to be, as I said, some during the summer and then some during the school day, too. At Roundabout Middle School, we have some targeted additions to the school. We're adding a full-time social worker. So last year, we added a social worker position. It was half, half, half at the high school and half at Roundabout. And so we want the person to be able to be full-time at the high school, and then we wanted to add the full-time position at Roundabout. I've said this probably in dozens of board meetings over the last few years, but the need for mental health support in our schools just continues to grow. This is a national trend, and so we want to keep being able to try to meet the need. So we're excited to be adding this position to Roundabout, and it's also, in a sense, in addition to the high school, too, because the person currently between the two buildings will now be here full-time. Our world language classes at Roundabout have been very large. They're probably some of our largest class sizes at Roundabout and in the district, so we want to add a world language teacher position to both help with the expansion of the Italian language program and also bring the class sizes down. One of our current Spanish teachers at Roundabout has become duly certified in Spanish and Italian, so we don't necessarily have to find someone certified in Italian. We're looking for Spanish and/or Italian to fill this need. We're adding a .5 general music teacher for Roundabout, and that's also to bring class sizes down. Our other area where we have some larger class sizes is in general music, and so we want to try to bring that down. It also allows the teachers who are covering some of those classes to be able to focus more on either lessons or band support or chorus support. And then just also based on looking at data and need, we want to add a reading teacher to Roundabout as well, to support kids who need extra support with reading. So at the elementary, and some of this is a little bit targeted to middle, so last year, we used federal funds to, to have one person be an RTI coordinator at the elementary level. It's been very needed and has gone really well, so we actually want to add a second person to that. They'll be coordinating response to intervention for the four elementary schools. That is a variety of things. It's supporting teachers to support students in the class. It's helping collect data. It's also helping, it's also helping in the meetings where, you know, parents and staff are involved, sort of brainstorming ways to support the teachers, so we're excited to be expanding that. Last year, we added basically a social emotional coordinator at the elementary level. We said it was a one-year position. We wanted to reevaluate. It's been a resounding success. This position has been visible in all four elementary schools just on a daily basis. They've made connections in every single elementary class in the district, and they've done some work at Roundabout, too, so we want to keep that going. They focus on, you know, social emotional regulation, responsive classroom, just a variety of things, just building community and connections, and also supporting teachers. This position also helps, as do the RTI positions, help with professional development, too. Also, this is a data-based budget development. We wanted to add to math, math intervention teachers at the elementary level, so each one will be split between two schools. We currently have TAs doing math intervention at our four elementary schools. They're going to continue doing that. This is an added layer of support for students with math. That's also, that's also based on just us looking at data and trying to support students who need a little bit extra support academically. So part of our budget development was really speaking with coordinators and principals, just in things beyond staffing that we need. So we met with the music folks, and they presented us with a few instruments that, you know, instruments can be pretty expensive, so we want to be strategic about that, and we want to be adding new instruments probably over the next several years. But we're adding some new instruments to the band program. We're also adding some, like, music curriculum for all the schools. We spoke with the art coordinator, and we're trying to add and be more equitable with art supplies across the elementary schools. We also have, I think we probably could use the word exponential, especially at the elementary level. We have exponentially increased clubs and after-school activities for students in the district. We are working over the next month or two to bring some data around that, but essentially, for the most part, it's teachers and some TAs have been hosting just a wide variety of clubs across really all levels, K to 12, but we've really expanded at the elementary level, and so that's a budget initiative that we want to keep going. And then lastly, we want to be providing some funding for more family education and connection events. A lot of this is connected into our strategic planning work, and so family outreach and family events is definitely one of them. You'll actually see a small example of this in, next week, I think. We're having several kindergarten orientations at our four elementary schools, I think in the next week or two. Those are in the evening. Teachers, the kindergarten teachers and related staff are coming to present to parents who have rising kindergartners for next year. It's something that we kind of did, we did it differently at each school, and a lot of times, we waited right till before the school year began, so this year, we're really trying to connect with kindergarten parents, rising kindergarten parents, way before the beginning of school, so they know what the program is and what the expectations are. That takes a little bit of funding to do things like that. We want to do those things throughout next year, both in-person and in some Zoom events, too. All right, Emery's going to talk about federal money?
Federal money. So we, we did receive federal money. S R 2 funding, which was a little over $2 million, is ending this summer. So we were able to use, it paid for all of the summer schools over the last few years. It's paid for some after-school interventions. At the time, it's paying for health and safety and opening schools back during COVID. The American Rescue Plan is in total $4.2 million. We have another year to do that. The summer school will be paid out of this part of it this year, out of this grant, and we are actually looking at doing some infrastructure changes, some, some capital-type things in this plan as well, so more, more to come on that. So this calculation, again, a lot of numbers, but it is the tax cap calculation. We talked about it at a previous meeting. Our maximum levy increase for Beacon is 3.64%. Again, in blue, the two areas that kind of make this calculation, tax-based growth factor, and as you remember, that reflects the amount of building in a municipality. Our tax-based growth factor in Beacon has been higher than most in Dutchess County and almost statewide because of the increase in the properties that are coming on the tax roll. And the allowable growth factor, so that's always the 2% mark right now, so this year it is 2%, but it's usually CPI, the lesser of 2% or CPI, but CPI unfortunately is way higher than 2%, but we only get a 2% increase. And this is the revenue projections again. This looks very similar to what we had suggested before. The state aid number came right in on the governor's proposal. There's a couple other things. Transfer from debt service is something different this year. We have Money in Debt Service Fund that all you can do is offset a debt payment. Transfer from debt service was, was a strategy that we used when we did the capital project to keep the tax levy flat, so that was a transfer in, that our financial advisors had suggested. And then it just shows our tax levy at the top at 3.64, and our budget-to-budget ended up increasing about 3.48% in total. So as part of the budget hearing, and you will see this in the newsletter that is going out in the mail tomorrow, that you'll be receiving before the vote, we split our budget into administrative, instructional, and capital based on state regs. So these are the final budget numbers from last year, proposed this year, and what the increases would be. So again, briefly, administrative talks about all the, all the operations, the superintendent's office, the deputy superintendent's office, assistant superintendents, the principals' offices and their secretaries. All of that lands in the administrative section. The instructional is, is really anything that affects kids, so anything in, in the school building, athletics, all of the related services are all in the instructional, and the capital is the facilities and operations and the debt service piece. So that's really how it kind of breaks out. So just about the propositions. So Proposition 1 is always the budget. Proposition 2, we are asking the voters to vote on new school buses. We need, in our retiring fleet, we need 372-passenger buses and 120-passenger van. The total amount of $530,000 will be spread out, we will be financing it and spread out over five years to match our state aid ratio. We get about 58.5% back in state aid, so we kind of match the expense and the revenue over five years. Bus proposition 3, we are putting out to the voters to buy an electric-powered bus. Why this proposition looks a little different than the other is that we are asking the voters to vote for an electric bus that is estimated to cost a little over $400,000, but only if we get $250,000 from grants and incentives. So there are a lot of grants and incentives out there. There was one that we had applied for that only targeted certain age buses, which unfortunately we didn't have on. The EPA just opened up the second round of funding, so we are investigating that as well. Buying an electric-powered bus kind of goes out over a year. You know, once we get the commitment level and the voters approve it, we can start a letter of intent, and we can start the process, and we can start the grant applications. So more to this, just more of the thought process is buying an electric bus, seeing how it works, getting the charger that goes with it, putting it out on our runs to see how it will work. The governor's budget had talked about this, and it did pass in the state budget, so there is reporting that we must do. It's not this year, it's next year, and it's, it's a plan. How are you going to make this happen by the state mandate of having all vehicles be electric? So that's going to be an interesting part to do. We're going to have to work a little closer with Central Hudson to see about the power coming into the bus garage, and we will have to talk about how to get the bus garage situated to be totally electric going forward. And Proposition 4, we're asking the voters to reduce the mileage requirement from 1.5 miles to 1 mile to be eligible for a bus. We found, you know, in studies that we're hoping that this, that more children that could ride the bus would be in better attendance in school. Our buses, it would be, we wouldn't be adding any buses. Some of our buses, and some of the taxpayers have commented to me before, that a lot of the buses run by and they don't look full. And sometimes they're right. High school especially, when you are eligible to ride the bus, but you either drive or have your parents drop you off. So we are targeting certain areas that we see that attendance is low, where we really want kids to get on a bus and go to school, and hoping that helps. So estimated tax increases. So if we were, if you were to vote on the budget, this is what your average, your average house in Beacon, Fischgel, and Wapingers would go up. The one thing I do want to alert you to is that I am using current assessed values. We don't receive our assessed values from the county until the summer, and we have seen historically that our assessed, our assessed values have gone up over the last five years. So someone would say, well, that's my house, and my assessment went up, but what we're talking about are new properties coming into the tax roll. So what, so you're basically taking the same levy amount, which we talked about, and you're spreading it out over more parcels, over more homes, over more businesses. So using the current assessment value on this slide, I always look at it as worst-case scenario, so that these are the current assessments that we used for last year. We will be getting new assessments. So in Beacon, the average home would be paying additional $135 a year. Fischgel's $168, Wapingers is $199. So the estimated tax increase overall is 3.98% across the three municipalities, and that actually does include basic star on a home. So if you recently purchased your home, you might be paying a little more, but you'd be getting a check in September because they, they would reimburse you directly for star. So just kind of keep all of that in mind. This slide just basically gives you an idea of where we fall in the county as far as our tax rate per thousand. Beacon is on the lower end. Obviously, some of the really small districts are a little bit lower than Beacon, but in contrast to other, other districts, our tax rate per thousand is on the lower side of the county. So contingency budget, although we don't like to talk about that, it is an important aspect of it. So if the, if the budget were to be voted down next week, the board would decide at that point whether to put it to revote in June the same way, a little bit less, and then if, if for some reason they do put it back up and it does fail the second time, you go into contingency budget. So only expenditures that are ordinary and contingent, there would be, you are not allowed to increase the tax levy from year to year, so that would mean approximately $1.7 million would have to be cut out of the proposed operating budget. And there are items that are specifically not included in contingency budget, so you can't purchase non-mandatory equipment. Certain student supplies wouldn't be in there. Facility use of our buildings, the only way an outside organization could use our building is to pay full cost. We do have a lot of community organizations that use our, our buildings, so that would be difficult for people to use. And computer hardware only for educational purposes, so not for offices or any other things that might, that might have been budgeted for. The 2023-24 budget supports, and this has been something that we have been supporting over the last few years. We do have lower class size. We fully support athletics and music and art programs. Academic electives, you know, that we always talk about adding, especially at the high school. All extracurricular activities, high school clubs, actually, that should say elementary, middle school, and high school clubs, because we definitely have increased all of the offerings. And mental health support, which Matt talked about, again, adding to the social worker position. And so again, in features of a contingency budget, unfortunately, would then be larger class sizes. We'd have to look at reduction in certain athletic teams, some loss of music and art, some academic electives, field trips, extracurricular, and again, the reduction of use by community organizations, which for us is really a large amount. I also want to talk about election of our four new board members. We have four seats, four people running for four seats, and that's in the order of, of the ballot. And just to remind everyone, our budget vote is next Tuesday, May 16th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here at Beacon High School in the gymnasium at Glenham Elementary School. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions are for the public, too.
Yeah. I just had one question. With this, this latest hire for the world languages, is, are we sort of fully supporting the program at that point, or will there still be more teachers needed? I know we sort of gradually.
I think, I think they would be fully supporting it right now.
Yeah.
You know, a year or two, we might have to shift. Having, we already have a duly certified, we have a Spanish-Italian teacher. Having a second one just provides us with a lot of flexibility. So, so yeah, we'll be, we'll be good to go with those, with that extra position. I, you know, I just want to briefly say, I think I say this in some form or another every year. This is going to date me a little bit, but 25 years ago, when I was a brand-new principal, the first superintendent I worked with, Kevin Castner, he would always say in his budget presentations, if you want to know what we value as a district, look at what we're spending our money on. And so, you know, these are some gains that we've made over the last, really, several years. I just want to highlight a couple. The elementary class size initiative has just really, really been a positive impact, something that we've worked on for several years. We added fourth-grade instrumental music several years ago through a grant, and then funded it through the budget. Academic electives at the high school have grown by leaps and bounds. The extracurricular and clubs, really now K to 12 has really expanded, and we're really trying to solidify it, both contractually with the Teachers Association and also through funding. And then lastly, we've really, really, for the last four years, we've added extra mental health support every single year in the budget. And then this year, we're going a little bit beyond and trying to find ways to provide more academic support beyond what we're currently doing for our students. And so I feel like it's a budget that, you know, it's very student-centered, really values the student experience, and we're proud to put it forward to the community. So beyond tonight, we will be doing a Zoom webinar. I'm going to have some assistance doing the Zoom webinar, because I tried to do a Zoom webinar on my own, thinking I, it was, it was not so successful. That was about a month ago, so we're going to have a little support Thursday night at 7:00, and people at that one, we're going to go over the same stuff, but people can submit questions through the, you know, the, through the webinar, and we can try to answer the questions that night as well. But this is an exciting budget to put forward. And, you know, Emery talked about the transportation part. You know, when we were talking with our principals now, a year and a half ago, especially at Roundabout and the high school, and we said, what, you know, what's going to make a difference? One of the things on their list was, we need more kids to get the bus to school, and I kind of naively thought, well, we'll just change that, like, let's just do it. And last summer, we were just going to do it, and we found out while we were trying to put the plan together that we need voter approval to do it, so we're really excited. That's going to impact, I think, about 75 high school and middle schoolers. It's going to be very low cost to the district, about $10,000 we're estimating, and I think that's going to make, it's one of those little things, and, but it's really going to make a nice impact. And then we're, we're excited to put the electric bus with the cost offset out to the voters, too. Like, we've been working hard on that. The EPA grant, just the second round, got announced, so we're excited to try to submit for that, so I think this budget really supports our students, keeps the gains we've made over the last few years, and we're excited to put it out there.
Thank you. I think there was one question from the audience.
Yeah.
I could ask a question, but I was wondering, the federal money, the ARP, it said on the slide that some of it was earmarked for mental health, and in, in the future, with what's left over right now, which you guys are going to be spending, could you elaborate on any things that are specifically earmarked from those funds, or is it all going to, like, a general?
Well, I'll tell my version, and then you, you fill in, but essentially, what we've done over the last few years is we've started the funding of these, like, additional social workers. We've started it with the federal funding, and then we've, we kind of then take it over with our budget, essentially. So, so when mental health is listed as, as one of the things for our, the last two years, we've So, so when mental health is listed as, as one of the things for our, the last two years, we've added mental health in the budget and we started it through ARP and then, and then we take over the funding. We, we've tried with the federal funds, for the most part, to not do things that we don't think we can keep doing once the money's gone. I mean, I think, I guess every school district would say that, but we've tried to be really thoughtful about that. So, you know, I've told the board this several times, when we create one of these new positions, their caseload fills up within like a month. And so obviously, that's one of our indicators that the need is great. And so the last thing we want to do is like two or three years from now, pull it back. So, so with all of, all of those, we've tried to kind of use the federal, federal funds to get us started and then we fill in, once it becomes more permanent, did I, is that pretty fair? But what other questions do you have?
Are there any state funds specifically for?
Not specifically. I know it was something that, you know, my organization is the New York Council of School Superintendents. I know my organization and I think several other professional organizations really advocated at, at, at the state budget level to have some really clear funding for mental health. To my knowledge, it, it sort of made it partway through the budget process and then it fell off to the side. We've been able to fund it, you know, we've been able to fund our expansion through our own, or, you know, partially federal, but then our own funds. I would, I think it's a huge area of advocacy moving forward, like the, you know, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a hard time to be a young person and I feel, I feel like the need is not going away and having the state be more specific about funding it, I think would be really helpful to school districts. But they do not specifically fund it right now, besides just the foundation aid we get.
Yeah, I, I think that would be something if we could unpack more over the next year. Because like at the county level too, it seems like there's, there is money for mental health, but it's not necessarily getting used in a way that supports our students. So maybe we can dig deeper into that.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think, you know, and Heather, Heather could probably speak to this better than me, but there certainly have been some things put in place at like the county level, like mobile crisis and things like that, that, you know, didn't exist years ago, they now do exist. That being said, there's so much more that could be done and, and, and this goes beyond our district and it becomes like a community thing. But it's, it's become so hard for schools and families to find then that extra level of support. And I don't have great answers for that. But I, it's certainly, I think it's something that, I think school districts are always advocating for their own budget. It could be something that, we actually have, we've done some advocacy around that.
We did do advocacy around community-based mental health support for students, yes.
So I never want to sound, because there have been efforts that have been made and really positive efforts. So I never want to sound negative about it, just, you know, it's just, it's like so vast. And, and it's just, it's just a huge need and it's not going to go away. So. Anymore? You're, you're. The, the budget hearing works a little bit differently. It's the one thing a year that doesn't really have a public comment, people could just ask questions. So, so we'll remind folks about the Zoom webinar. And Heather, you were one of the sad witnesses to my last webinar where the whole thing sort of fell apart on me. But we're going to be ready with the technology this time and we'll be able to answer more questions.
Okay, great. Are you sending an email for the Zoom or a robocall?
Yeah, I'll do, yeah. I'll probably put it on social media too.
Anybody else have any questions from the board? Thank you so much. This is an exciting budget, I'm really.
Is the summer program going to look similar to what it did last, what it was last year?
The summer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to make you.
The difference with the summer program this year, last year, elementary was four weeks and middle was four weeks. This year it has to be three week at the elementary and three at the middle. And that is really do more to the capital project than anything because the only building we can really use this summer is the high school. So, so we just had to cut down just for that reason. And we're not even going to think about 2024 because I'm not sure any building's going to be usable that year. So maybe, well, that's way in the future. That's because of the capital project.
Okay, can I have a motion to close the budget hearing, please? Alina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Eunice.
Comments or questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Our student representatives to the board are no doubt busy with all of the things going on right now.
Or enjoying the weather.
Or enjoying the weather, hopefully that, but I have a feeling they're nose down to the books. Reviewing the agenda, there are a couple of additions and corrections. We added 11.07, our equity policy for first read, 12.07, stipend added, amended 12.09, and added two resolutions, 12, 20, 12.24 and 12.25. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to discuss attorney-client advice? And the board will return in about 20 minutes. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes six to zero. Thanks. We're going to continue with superintendent's report.
I will be brief tonight. Just another reminder that we had a budget hearing tonight, but we're going to be doing the Zoom version of it on Thursday night at seven. I will send the link out Wednesday and Thursday, we'll put it on our website. And we'll, people will be able to submit questions and we will do our best to answer them and we'll go through the same information. And on Friday, I also put out to the community, just when all of our spring concerts are, and we're in the midst of spring concert season right now. And, and so those are open to the public. And I welcome folks to come hear what all of our music students are doing. And then I will just end with, and I will go around to present these. I have three NISBA awards to give out tonight to board members. So Kristin Flynn, you are tonight are receiving the Board Achievement Award. Right? So I'll deliver it in a second. And.
What?
Flora Sather, you're receiving the Board Excellence Award. Sister trainings you've done, I think. And then Meredith, you tonight are receiving the Board Mastery Award. And at the top of Meredith's, it looks like a check, but it's not a check. It is just a little coupon for one complimentary board training.
Oh, my gosh.
Don't say solid ones.
Too much.
It's going to be like Dunkin' Donuts or something.
Just don't.
I don't want her to give the word being competitive.
Wait, I'm starting to feel like mine now feels like that. Honorable mention.
Very exciting.
I feel very bronze right now. Mastery versus achievement. But I will say I don't remember doing a training, so I feel surprised.
I was very good during the pandemic, but I feel like I have kind of fallen off.
I might have stumbled on a webinar.
I'm sorry, two other quick things. One, I think NISBA has like a leadership training this summer, like.
Me too, it's the end of July.
If, if anyone's interested in going to that, let us know. And then lastly, just a holiday name review committee update. We had our second meeting a couple of weeks ago. We've only scheduled three meetings as a committee, so our third one is going to be June 1st. And I'll, at the board meeting that follows June 1st, I'll give a report about where we are. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Board comments, Kristin?
No comments, other than I'm very excited about the budget that's being put forward. I think it addresses a lot of needs that we identified in the district and moves a lot of the larger, larger goals forward. So really proud of it.
Thank you. Eunice?
No comment.
Alina?
No comment.
Anthony?
No comments.
Craig?
Gee, I hate to interrupt that run of no comments.
We might be out of here, right?
We did have a meeting of the Audit and Finance Committee at which we met by Zoom with our internal auditor team to report on the human resources research that they did. Nothing that jumped out that caused us to lose our lunch or anything, but we did have a number of recommendations for how the procedures can be tightened up and improved. So they'll be working on, as will our staff, on a corrective action plan, as is usual in the case of audits, whether they're internal or external. And I think we have been well-served by an outside look at an area that we designated as something that we wanted to get some additional insight into. So I think we moved along pretty well and we will be sitting down at some point in the future to talk about what other kind of focus areas might be looked at by the internal auditing company.
Yeah, I, I put the minutes in for that today, so it'll be on the next agenda. But we're waiting for a proposal from them on scope of work for, for technology and for payroll for, for next year. And we don't have another meeting scheduled for audit, correct? And do we want to make, do we want to schedule one?
What's that?
Should we be scheduling one?
I, I think we, we might very well, we'll have to check with Anne Marie and see if there's anything additional that we hear from those consultants. But we probably should sit down and talk about, as we did at the end of the last meeting, where exactly we go and what our priorities are going to be. And there may be some budgetary implications there if we decide to engage them beyond the current level.
Yeah.
There's some discussion of that.
And what, what is our status with the facilities committee? Should we, I mean, should we try to schedule a June audit and facilities doubleheader? Matt?
There's going to be a bid opening next week too.
Okay.
So the board is going to be asked to go down some contracts at the first meeting in June.
Okay.
So either a meeting before that or we'll have someone come to present to the board.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, we can schedule it over email if we need to.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
One other item, we did have a brief discussion about looking further at our fiscal future. This is kind of up in the air and I think I'd like to sit down with Matt sometime and let him know in more detail my list of things I think that we should look at and keep track of. Every time I think about it, I think of another one, but it should be written down.
Definitely.
I think we should also, we should map out like the protocol, like when we, like have the, decide upon the scope of work and how we, like, and like, we kind of touched on it at the last one, but the, the upcoming audits and what areas we want to focus on.
Yeah.
You mean the external audit?
No, the internal, the upcoming, yeah.
I mean, I did try to capture some of the questions that came up in the minutes because I thought it would be good to collect kind of these, these bigger questions that we're trying to look at. So we could maybe build on that. Okay, Flora?
Yeah, so the Dutchess County School Board Association met and we decided that we were going to start building in group advocacy efforts through the resolution process into DCSBA's sort of annual activities. So we're putting together a process now where we can communicate well who, who, which districts are interested in working on which resolutions, which districts are willing to bring those resolutions to, to a vote by their board. And then the idea would be that we would, all the districts who agree to that resolution would sign on to it together. And that, you know, as I discussed earlier, that sort of increases the power of those resolutions for the New York State School Board Association, which has a really powerful advocacy arm. And, you know, we now have sort of like a working spreadsheet and we're hammering out the process. So it's not perfect, but it's a start. And there seems to be a general consensus that this is how we want to do things moving forward. So I'm pretty excited about that. I also, and we're waiting to see sort of, everybody's still kind of digesting the budget and what it means. So nobody's really chosen what they want to advocate about yet in terms of resolutions. But I feel like that's going to be happening even before the next DCSBA meeting happens. So stay tuned for that and we'll, we'll definitely be discussing it here and in the next Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Meeting, which I think we're supposed to have on Monday, June 5th at 6:00. If everybody on PRALE can make that. Which day? June 5th, Monday, right? It's right before the BOE meeting.
Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to mention was that, so DCSBA is hosting this, a dinner, I think it's a dinner, on June 1st. I emailed you guys the details, so let me know if you want to attend. But I wanted to mention that they're going to have students from the five districts in the county that have the seal of civic readiness to sort of have the students talk about that experience and, and what it's meant for their academic work and things like that. So I'm really actually excited to hear that. So, I mean, it's a free meal and students also are going to tell us something interesting. So I can drive you if you want to go. And that's it.
Awesome. I wanted to let you know, I did reach out to Danielle Grasso regarding the resubmitting.
Oh, good.
The same resolution. She said that we could, she asked that we address their rationale for not moving it forward last year. So we can look back at that. And I was in touch with Brian Fessler about the pilot issue, about the pilot not being folded into the tax base growth income, tax base growth factor. When it comes back on the tax rolls, he said that there's still, I have it here, that it has not been made, but that they have been told that the governor plans to make the change through regulations. So they're hoping that as soon as the budget is really, the dust settles on it, that they would move forward on that. So I think we should watch that very carefully because if, if she doesn't get to it for some reason, I do think we should make it a resolution. But it sounds like they, they feel hopeful that the governor will get to it.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm interested to know how that timing works out with our.
I know.
Current slate of pilot stuff.
Maybe we can get a little more assurance that it's going to happen at least, but yeah. I'll, I'll let you know if I hear anything else about that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Only comment I had is I'm trying to put together the board eval, self-evaluation tool. And we'll be getting the superintendent evaluation going soon as well. So check your inbox for that. So moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to vote on separately?
11.04.
11.03 and 12.16P7.
12.16P7?
Yep.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 1509, less 11.04, 11.03 and 12.16P7?
So moved.
Flora, do you have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero. Thanks for the donation. Donations? Can I have a motion to approve 11.03?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm, I'm in favor, passes six to one. Can I have a motion to approve 11.04?
So moved.
Anthony, a second?
Second.
Second by Flora, comments or questions?
That's when I say something, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. So I was just, you know, as I'm learning, and it's about wellness and the food, which is great as far as healthy food options in the school and the district.
But I had a question on the fundraising part of it. Is this something that's knowledge to, say, all, like, the PTOs that are out there when we're, or even like the school clubs and student government when they're doing their fundraising? Because it's, it states that it needs to follow specific guidelines, and it needs to have all these things, but I don't know if everyone's aware of that. And are there exceptions? And why I ask, because when, when students are doing the fundraisers, rather than student government, National Honor Society, those are the things that sell, unfortunately. Like, that's, those are the big sellers. So I don't know, because I'm still learning, and I know it's in here. But is it something that everyone is aware of? And are there stipulations where if it's a fundraiser, and if we do it once a month, so like, once a month, you're going to have some kind of sweet fundraiser? Like, I don't, what does this all mean in the sense that? I know that the other members of the PTO or school council or any of that, are they aware of it? And if they were not aware, and they say they do a fundraiser that's Krispy Kreme, or I know, like, we're trying to do ice cream for the high school, like, would it get stopped in the middle of it? Would someone raise a red flag and say, you can't do this, and then, and then what? So I'm just not sure what we, yeah.
Matt, can you address it?
I don't, I can pull up the exact language. Does it completely eliminate it? Or does it suggest that the food meets the guidelines?
Ensure that all fundraising selling food or beverages to student on school campus during the school day meet the competitive food nutrition standards set in the federal guidelines.
During the school day?
But that's when a lot of, like, I know they had Krispy Kreme during the school day, we do ice cream during the school day.
Chocolates.
Chocolates during the school day. And it says for whole grain fruits, vegetables, calories, fats, saturated, like, come on. That's, no one's going to do a fundraiser with that. So I'm just curious, I guess I'm just curious, is it something that this language has always been, and we should still do it, and it's kind of is, it just kind of is what it is? Or I'm catching it because I know we do a lot of the fundraising, and it's a lot of sweets and a lot of candy and a lot of, so I was just.
Who, so who's the admin on the Wellness Committee?
Heather.
Okay. Because the last time we did the policy was, a, a lot of these changes were started from the Obama administration, from an initiative from the first lady, right, around, you know, impacting childhood obesity, part of that Let's Move campaign. And I remember we talked a lot about celebrations and having, like, kind of like a healthy option and all of that sort of stuff. I don't, but I feel like, I think the fundraisers that we kind of focused on were bake sales after school.
I always, I always thought that the main thing we didn't want to do was compete with the school lunch program. Like, we didn't want to be selling pizzas, selling slices of, you know, that kind of thing, like, at lunchtime. So I don't want to have a policy that kind of becomes impossible to enforce, because then it's just words on a piece of paper. So maybe that one part of it, we just take a little look at to review. Because I, I hear what you're saying, like, there's a lot of groups that have had successful fundraisers, and this could be just eliminating a bunch of that. And I'm not totally sure that's what we set out to do, so let me just review that.
Yeah, we, we went through that. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, the language was definitely different in the previous version.
Yeah.
Where it was, it said foods and, for fundraising, foods and beverages that meet or exceed the USDA smart snacks and schools nutrition standards may be sold through fundraisers on the school campus during the day, provided they meet the district policy requirements regarding solicitation of charitable donations. So it wasn't, it was kind of like.
Like, yeah, USDA would be like having nutritional information on it, not, it wasn't, it was a restrictive.
There's, this is just my opinion. A fundraiser isn't like a daily thing.
Right.
You know, and I, I think, I want to, I don't want to, I don't want to have something that completely eliminates all our fundraisers. If we had, like, some sort of fundraiser where Krispy Kreme donuts were sold every single day, you know, no, I'm just sort of using that as an example.
But that does happen. It's, it's sort of like, I've seen it in other districts where it's, it's just an ongoing fundraiser, where you can always get.
Right. So I think, I think there's, I think we could achieve something that allows some successful traditions, because, you know, this is something that the kids get really excited about, and they invest in it. And, but, but also isn't, A, competing with our lunch program, and B, it's not like, you know, that you can get your Krispy Kreme every single day. I, I'm sorry to pick on Krispy Kreme.
No, no.
I'm a, I'm a donut fan myself. But, so let me just take a look at that part. But thanks for bringing that up.
So should we table it for?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So can I have a motion to table 11.04?
So moved.
Second.
Flora and Kristin?
Sure.
Anne, I do have this.
All in favor? Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero. Okay, can I have a motion to approve 12.16P7?
So moved.
Kristin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Flora. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
I'm in favor, passes six to zero. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Everybody's second.
Second by Eunice?
Uniforms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am also in favor, passes seven to zero. You have a great night.
Look at me doing my reading.